Call the meeting to order and I ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 21st meeting. This will be two different meetings. We're going to start out with a joint meeting between the Del Rapids City Council and the County Commission. So we will start with that meeting and then once we have convened that meeting, we will move on to the Minnehaha County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones and that the meeting documents for both meetings are on the end of the counter. With that, I would ask for, is there a quorum on the Del Rapids City Council side? Okay, and we have a quorum on the City Council side. Would you please just give your names?
Early, E-A-R-L-E-Y.
Mark Chris.
Mike Garretts, G-E-R-A-E-T-S.
Mary Falcone.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a quorum on the Commission's side. Is there a motion to approve the agenda on the Del Rapids City side? A motion and a second on the Del side. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. On the Minnehaha County side?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider approval of a conditional use permit number 16-02. David Heinhold. There you are. I didn't see you back there.
Good morning, Commissioner. David Heinhold, Planning Department. What we have here is a request for, to allow a contractor shop and storage units, or contractor shop and storage yard, commercial roofing company. This is just south of Quartzite Street and Garfield Street. The property right here is for the, where the contractor shop or the commercial roofing company would be located of their conditional use permit request. The property owner, who, both the applicant and the property owner who submitted the appeal letter, Edward Klein, owns property right here adjacent to that. It's a little cut out where it doesn't complete that full rectangle there, the red line there. Both of them were sent a letter last week, the, of this meeting date and time, to attend and express their concerns. The, the letter submitted concerns over potential drainage problems which are related to a separate issue from draining water onto the subject property right here. And, which was expressed that the, the, the letter stated that he wanted the, or the, or Mr. Klein wanted the property owner to, the new property owner to know that the drainage could not be changed in any way that would affect his property or the property to the west, who submitted the appeal letter. Going through some of the, the issues, there's a site plan that shows where everything is. The, the parking would be located on the north side. You'd have that. Quartzite Street is right here, is a newly improved, or will be newly improved street in the city of Del Rapids. And, and then Garfield is over to the east of that. And then the building is contained as an existing building, so there would be no improvements on the property with the conditional use permit request as, as proposed by the applicant. And then, and then the septic system would be located south of the property. It's just one, is an existing use where the restaurant was. Fairly large system, so no improvements would be needed to that as far, as, as far as what that system contains. Staff, or the Planning Commission, both the city and the county voted unanimously to approve the request, so this is, you know, I'll go through any questions. I took some photos of the property, so if you want to go through those, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
David, could you read the legal description for the record, please?
The legal description is lot 4A in the northeast corner, north half, lot 11, X, south 160 feet, west 6 feet, north 460 feet, east 378 feet of Kennefick subdivision, section 16, township 104, north, range 49, west.
Is that correct? Okay. Are there any questions for David? Okay. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone who wants to speak against this project? Do you know one? Is there discussion on either side?
I have a question for David if, uh...
Which one?
David, the, the person appealing this says that he wants the new owners to be advised the present drainage cannot be altered. What is he talking about? Because doesn't that drain to, away from his land? Is he thinking that being on the top of the hill, that it will drain it towards him?
So what the, the property owner who submitted the appeal letter, Mr. Klein, what I think he's referring to is the drainage, there's a, a previous issue in regards to snow piles being piled along the fence. If I go forward here, picture, which shows the location there. One more. You can see that in the background, you have the white building which is up on top of a hill, which is probably about four to five feet above the subject property where the request is. The, a drainage complaint was submitted as far as the current property owner or piling snow piles up against the fence and potentially creating drainage issues onto the, the adjacent landowner's property. What this is referring to is any future improvements in, in regards to changing or potentially altering the drainage pattern on the site in terms of, if there was any parking improvements or potential building expansions that would have a, a negative effect on the, the adjacent landowner.
Commissioner Barth, does that answer your question?
It, it does, but I, you know, unless the applicant is bringing in, is going to jack up the building and bring in 30 feet of fill, I just don't see that the drainage is going to go uphill.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
David, so if there were going to be parking lot changes, the kinds of things that you mentioned, would, would the applicant need to come back and get additional approval for those kind of changes?
So if there was any major changes that were in over an acre, they would need to go through the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources. For any area that would potentially affect more than an acre, draining more than an acre. So this property, for example, is about three to four acres. So the parking lot is, covers about half of that. So they already be over that, that acre requirement that's required to get a permit through the DNR for stormwater runoff, any drainage.
Additional questions? I don't think there's any from the Del side. I would look for a motion on the Del Rapids side.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit on the Del Rapids side. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Minnehaha County side, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I would look for a motion to adjourn on the Del Rapids side. And a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And a motion on the county side.
So moved.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The joint meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. And with that, I will call the Minnehaha County Commission meeting to order. And the first order of business on the Minnehaha County side is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the meeting minutes from June 14, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $309,929.55.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Comments on the bills? There were a, was a very long list of election bills in this, pages upon pages upon pages, so kind of interesting to flip through. I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the InterLakes Community Action Partnership 2015 Annual Report. Item B is the Registers of Deeds Reports of Fees Collected in May 2016. Those are both on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special action for the approval of the appointment of Diane Recuma as interim Director of Equalization. Carrie Deaver.
Hi, I have two special commission action requests for you today. One, again, is for Diane Recuma to serve as the interim Director of Equalization. This is just during the recruitment period for the permanent replacement for Director of Equalization, and I'm asking for your approval of a temporary additional duty pay of $3,233.60 by weekly effective yesterday.
Okay, so questions or a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is Commission Special Action.
The next item I have for you is to approve a promotion for Terry Myers, who is currently serving as a maintenance worker at $15.43 an hour in the Facilities Department. We'd like to move him to the position of Building Facility's Maintenance Technician as those are more comparable to the job that he is currently performing. Proposed rate of pay is $18.80, and we're requesting approval to make that effective July 2nd. Just as clarification, this is not an additional FTE for the department. It's converting one position to another and promoting Terry into that.
Okay, is there any questions for Carrie on that? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatements. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Transportation of Public Meeting Regarding Tentative 2017-2020 Four-Year Statewide Transportation Improvement Program. It's at 7:00 PM, July 13, 2016, Ramcoa Hotel at 3200 West Maple Street, Sioux Falls. Item B is authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider the 2016 annual Bryant JAG, J-A-G program spending plan for Minnehaha County in the city of Sioux Falls on July 5, 2016. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Heiburger, can I speak to that a little bit?
Good morning, you sure can, sorry!
No, that's okay. I'm Kristin Tran. I'm with the Sheriff's Office. I was just going to present to you a little bit on what the spending plan has been, or has been proposed for this post-notice. This year, the Burn JAG amount actually went up. It is based on crime rates and violent crime rates in Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, and so that would be why the dollar amount actually increased from last year, which is different. And later on in the agenda, we will have a...
That's what I was thinking, you had something.
An agreement as far as how, it's, it's our routine agreement of how the, the disparate allocation happens. And, but what the Sheriff's Office is looking to spend their portion on is portable radios with encryption. The radios that a lot of our deputies are carrying are becoming quite a bit dated. And as they're, as they're portable, they review, receive a bit more abuse and, and break down a little easier, so we're looking to slowly replace them because the cost of that is quite high. And then also to change the vehicle gun locks that we have. Again, we're doing this kind of bit by bit, but it allows for a better, or a more secure location for the weapons that we're currently using. The, the police department is looking at using a multi-use department trailer and then also gas masks for their officers, so...
Thank you, Kristin. Are there any questions on that? And we already have approved it, so...
Thank you.
Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 67057 in the amount of $2,310. Robert Wilson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. The Commission Office has received an application for a compromise lien for DPNO 67057, $2,310. The applicant requests a compromise and release in full upon payment of $500. The applicant is in the process of purchasing a home located at 4604 South Klein Avenue, Sioux Falls, for $175,500. Closing is scheduled for this Thursday, June 23rd, and this lien was discovered during the title work leading up to closing. This lien represents both poor relief services and public defender services provided between July of 2008 and September 2013. The applicant has made several small payments. County services related to the lien total $2,560. Total of $250 in partial payments has been received to date with the additional payment of $500 as proposed. The applicant will have repaid $750 or 29.3% of the total assistance incurred. The applicant lists an annual income of just over $37,000 according to last year's tax return. Also received a refund of $4,400. Reports total assets of just over $35,000, including check, checking and savings account balances, cash, small investments, and the value of two vehicles as well as household, household goods and other property. Reported debt is just over $54,000, including a number of loans and, for credit card and other financial institutions. And as part of your application packet, there's actually a breakdown of all debts that was included as part of the application that was presented to the Commission Office. The, the applicant communicating to, working with our office and preparing this application indicates that she will owe almost $800 at closing, which again is this Thursday. In some follow-up conversations, understand that she's also required at the time of closing to have, have several thousand dollars in a checking account available at that time. And so that, I think there is some financial constraints that, that led her to the, the offer of $500. I believe your, your applicant is here, may wish to, to address the Commission. I'm not for certain, but I believe she's been briefed that if she does want to, she can just stand up from her seat. She doesn't need to come to the podium to address you. I would stand by for your questions or comments by the applicant.
You, you don't have to come up here and just speak loudly, please. And don't give your name.
Um, yes, I have been trying to make small payments to pay towards this. I really wanted to pay it off in full and did not know that there was a lien. I went through the process of purchasing a home and kind of moving out of my life, and then found the lien. And with the lien on there, it's going to make it a little bit more difficult to possibly even close on, um, my family. So I'm just hoping that I get some leniency on this. I'm very appreciative of all the assistance of the head of the past two years.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Burr?
I appreciate you working towards paying this off. So my question is, with the amount of debt you have, plus the amount of your mortgage, that's a, a huge burden for, for what your income is. Are you confident that you can make this go?
I'm engaged right now, too, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so some of, some of the debts are paid with my account right now.
Right. Thank you.
Comments?
I have a question for Robert. Uh, the poor relief, were those medical bills or, do you have a breakdown of what they are? Are they rent subsidy or what?
Let me get to that screen. It is, it is classified as, as poor relief, and that's provided in, between '08 and '09 and then '13 as well. So I, I can't give you a more specific answer that it, it is poor relief which would be, would be...
Can I direct the question to the applicant then?
It was for rental assistance.
Speak up a little.
It, the assistance was for rental assistance.
Rental.
My rent at the time. I was going through PTSD from some structural issues in my debt. And so at that point, I was having a hard time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to agree to the $500 payment. And if I get a second, I'll comment further.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Burr?
I, I did have a concern that this was setting up the applicant for disaster by owing too much money. But the idea of having a place to raise her child and to begin paying property taxes is positive for me, and so that's where I'm coming from.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I will not be supporting it for what, the reasons Jeff had originally. I'm concerned at the huge amount of debt there, and I don't think we'd be doing it in their favors, but I will not be supporting it.
I have a motion and a second. Do we want roll call? Do we just want to vote?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay. Commissioner Burr? Roll call. Yeah, you just called it.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kelly?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passes, three, two, one, so we're passed. Robert can help you with the rest of that if you need any more additional help on that. Okay, with that, we'll move on to DPNO number 29511 in the amount of $6,476.52.
Yes, Commissioners, again, Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. DPNO 29511 in the amount of $6,476. This application was brought to the, the Commission Office. The lien is in the name of the applicant and her ex-husband. The applicant requests a compromise and release in full with no payment as it applies to her relie, leaving the full amount in the name of the ex-spouse. The couple was married in December of 1991, divorced in September of 1996. We have provided marriage certificate and divorce decree documenting both dates. After the couple was divorced, the previous balance was paid in full and there was a zero balance. Between 2001, 2007, additional county assistance was provided and added to this lien. The Commission Office has confirmed that all assistance after the lien balance was, was paid to zero, new assistance was provided solely to the ex-husband, and they were not married at that time. So we have provided for your, for your review application, full summary sheet of the financial, full application and, and financial information, and would, would look forward to your consideration. I believe any questions on this one would be more appropriate to State's Attorney's Office simply because it's a, this is a matter of, of dates and when charges liens were incurred and marital status.
Commissioner Burr?
I'd make a motion to compromise and release the lien in full with no payment as it applies to the applicant, leaving the full amount in the name of the ex-spouse.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. Next is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity time, and we would just ask you to keep your comments brief. Thank you.
Al Miran, 25935, 469th Avenue, Sioux Falls. "In 2010, I served as a member of the Drainage Task Force that put together the proposal which is currently in effect for the Drainage Ordinance. And since that time, there have been over 900 drainage permit applications. And the vast majority of those, 95% have been approved through the planning and zoning and did not go to the Drainage Board. Only about 45 of these permits went to the Drainage Board." And so I think that's a testament to the success of the, of the ordinance. And I also want to commend the Commission in the sense that in a year like this, where we've had excess moisture early in the spring, this drainage, the drainage operations that have been conducted have led to greater ease with respect to planting and more productive crop ground. And so that's a testament to, to your board and to the Planning and Zoning Office that less than 5% or 45 of these permit applications have come before your board for a decision. So I want to compliment you on that first, okay? So if there's any questions or comments, I would entertain that, but I want to go on to the second point, if I might. And that's with respect to some of the new signage that's taking place in the county. I think some of that is good. I mean, we end up with larger and more readable street signs, that sort of thing. I don't know what the cost was on that to either the county or the federal government. But I think there's another area that needs to be addressed, and that's the, the reflective post, that sort of thing that have been applied to some of the culverts in the townships. These have been placed in, in areas that are restricting the, the movement of snow, and I see some real problems as we move into the winter. I went to the township government and they indicated that they were given a choice of a few years ago of either having the federal government pay for these, or they would later have to do it themselves. I think there's some times when we have to say no. I think this has been a waste of funds. People have been out there, of course, to, to mark the areas, and then we had the locates, and now they put in posts which really probably are going to be removed by snowplows. Obviously, those people that designed this haven't been in South Dakota when we get 100 inches of snow. And unlike the city of Sioux Falls, we don't have an opportunity to move it off. We have to blade it to the side, and I see some real problems when that comes up. So those are my comments today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Al. I appreciate those comments. DJ, did you want to have any response on them? I, I would, I'm sorry, I've come, come down on the side with Al. They've just gone up and Al, Al and I lived in the same area and we have not spoken. It is overkill, and I know you have nothing to do with it, but it's like unbelievable the amount of signs.
Sure. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent, and I heard part of the comments. I was over in the other room listening, but also talking to a sheriff deputy. So I heard part of the comments. It sounds like there was, there's some concern in one of the townships about the additional signage that's being placed as part of the countywide signing project.
Culverts specifically.
Along the culverts, yeah, but near the culverts. And so, again, that countywide signing project is a state project that they've coordinated with all of the counties in the, in the state that wish to participate. And when they, when a county elects that they want to participate, they pass through that participation to the townships or the eligibility to the townships, and the townships decide whether or not they want to participate. And, and the signing is governed by the manual uniform traffic control device, the MUTCD. And that tells us where we should put signs, where we should not put signs, and, and that governs how we install our signage. And, and so the state's program that uses federal dollars, and that's why it's a 100% cost share, they, they install signage in concurrence or in, in line with the MUTCD. And they give us a few options on how many delineators we want going around a curve, for example, but there are certain things that we don't have an option on, and that would be like an object marker at an obstruction, which a covert qualifies as an obstruction. And so those types of signs, they are required by the MUTCD, and every government agency in the United States needs to put those signs on their culverts. And, and so this project is installing those. There's a whole bunch of culverts out there in the United States, especially in rural areas, that don't have them up. Many of our township roads in Minnehaha County did not have those signs up. Some of our own county highway roads with culverts did not have those up. But because of this project, they're being put in because they are required, and so we acknowledge that there is a whole bunch of extra signage that, that was not there before, and, and we acknowledge that some people might not be happy with that, but they're required signs, and, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. So because we agreed to be part of the program, we're getting the signs paid for. The alternative was not to participate in the program and then have to put them in at a later date at our own expense. And so I, I think it's good that we all participated in the program and we got the signs for free. It's unfortunate that we all, all have a lot of extra signs to take care of, but that's just a really quick summary, I guess, of the program. And if you have any questions to entertain, or that I could entertain, I would feel free to answer those. We have some additional... Siri doesn't know what that means. We we have, we have some additional, or we have the same concerns that the township has with snow removal. Those signs are relatively close to the road, edge of roadway, a few feet. And so when we blade off snow with our wings especially, we're going to be hitting a lot of those more than likely. And so there's going to be additional maintenance as a result of this program. But like I said before, the signs needed to be there and they were going to be there whether they put them in now for free or we put them in at our own cost later.
Thanks, DJ. I think Al has a a comment and I will allow you to have one more comment, Al.
Just, yeah, one quick comment with respect to the signage. One of the things that I noticed, there's a sign going into the city of Crooks that says thirty-five ahead and then the speed limit about two hundred feet ahead of the sign is twenty.
I know there's been a couple of mistakes that have gone back and repaired in our area. It's okay, DJ. We'll do, we'll make sure we take care of it. I'm sure that awareness is part of it because they've caught a couple other ones with maybe a sign went up on a wrong spot. So awareness is part of it too, so.
I'm chair.
Commissioner Burr?
I guess I'd like to comment too on, you know, thank you, DJ, for not reading that manual. But as to Al's comments, you know, I think with the soggy spring that we had, it is clear that farms that had drain tile were able to be cultivated sooner and planted sooner. And the fact is that Minnehaha County is the number five county in the state of South Dakota for ag income. And most people think that we're a big city and nothing else. But if you look at the map, you can see that most of the county is rural. Most of the county is farming. And that's truly our business. We have the most farmers of any county in the state. It's true, we have the smallest farms, but we're productive and we're not the biggest county in land, but we're number five in the state in ag income.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. With that, we will move on to regular business. Item number ten is a public hearing to consider an application for a special events liquor license for Big Jay's Roadhouse at Blue Haven Barn located at four six five nine four two hundred and sixty-eighth Street, Sioux Falls. Olivia Larson. I'll take Cindy Jospin.
The Attorney's Office received an application from Big Jay's Roadhouse for the special event license. They are requesting to sell alcohol beverages at a wedding on September twelfth, two thousand sixteen at Blue Haven Barn. The property is legally described as track three, except number one, Correll's Edition, Southeast Quarter, Section thirty-six, Township one oh one, Range fifty-one. The application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorneys, and Planning and Zoning, and no objections or concerns were reported. So today we're requesting approval for the special event license.
Is there anyone who wants to speak against this permit? Is anyone who wants to speak in favor of this permit? Okay. Look for a motion.
Take a motion to approve.
Duncan?
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is consider a motion to approval preliminary plans of number sixteen dash zero for Holbeck additions, lot number one through three and lot one in track A and lot two of track A. And Scott, I'll let you read the legal description.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. Here you have a request. This is a routine item for approval of a preliminary plan sixteen dash one. The property is located approximately six miles north of Sioux Falls, near the intersection of two hundred and fifty-fifth Street and Highway one fifteen. And the the legal description are lots one and two of track A and lots one, two, and three of Holbeck Edition. And as, and this is in Section thirty-four of Township one oh three North, Forty-Nine West. This is an item. It is a thirty-one acre parcel of property. And the applicant is proposing, as I indicated, five lots. There are six eligibilities that are there. And above you or on the screen is the, shows the preliminary plan. This is a routine item. Once a preliminary plan goes to the Planning Commission, it's a requirement that you also review it and take action on the Planning Commission's recommendation. They recommended approval of the preliminary plan. There was some discussion at the meeting and the applicant is here. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. He has met, the applicant has met all the requirements of the subdivision regulations for preliminary plans. And once the preliminary plan is approved, this would allow the applicant to bring back, to bring a final plat, which would actually create the lots and would be recorded at the register of deeds.
Any questions for Scott? Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Is there a motion?
Well, there is, I think there's someone appealing this.
It's, okay, it wasn't listed as a public hearing. Is it a public hearing?
This was not an appeal.
Oh, sorry.
This was not an appeal. It's just a requirement that a preliminary plan, once the Planning Commission takes act or makes a recommendation, it comes to you for a final, for a final action.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. The motion, is there a second? I'll take a sec, I'll second it. Second, did you want to speak in favor or against or?
I'm very much opposed to that.
You may, I'll give you the opportunity to speak. We have a motion and a second to approve. But if you'd like to speak, you have to give your name and your address.
Sure. Name is Tony Lee. I reside at four seven five six three two hundred and fifty-fifth Street. And I'm opposed to this because the plans of watershed, which supposedly are addressed, but have never been presented, which I'm told this is the phase to do it at, haven't been made available. They haven't been presented to either the previous board or the commission. And I mean, I already have a damaged home from watershed of this proposed property just by changing from row crop to alfalfa. And when I approached the board before you, we were told that when you're standing up here and verbal commitments and verbal indications are strictly only verbal, at what point does that become? How is that helpful to the communication of either the board or the commission? Meaning, they went from a row crop that had forty-one percent open area of soil to allow water absorption to alfalfa that has eight percent open area. Therefore, the water has to go somewhere and I had a flooded basement last spring. I have a basement completely tore up. It took out my furnace. I had a finished basement. I tiled all the way around my house. And yet, when the conditional use of bringing these eligibilities forward from the floodplain was brought forward, it was requested and attached to that conditional use that a D E and R plan, watershed plan was going to be proposed with this development. And how is this anything routine for a routine approval when that information isn't being presented? I mean, I I have a flooded basement. It was finished. I'm working to get it corrected. I'm easily going to have over eighty thousand dollars of damages. And yet, I'm supposed to sit here as a subordinate property and just accept this to to continue to go on? Where is there any type of support or communication from the board or the commission to actually follow through with what you guys have put up as the requirements of the conditional use? There is no conduit for what the commission puts forth to follow that piece of property from owner to owner to make sure that the requirements put forth are actually adhered to. And that's really my point, is I need to actually talk to planning and zoning because I am a subordinate property and and reading through the drainage ordinance, if you would. I have rights and my rights have been violated. But as a commission, what are your rights when you make a conditional use approval to actually follow through on what was laid out?
Scott, do you want to respond to that? This is a preliminary plan and so I think we have a whole lot farther to go yet before we get to.
Well, first of all, I will tell you that part of the requirements of the of the subdivision regulations are that the, with the submission of a preliminary plan, the applicant submits a drainage plan, an erosion control plan, engineered road plans. And those were all submitted. So what the, what Mr. Lee has indicated that that information has not been submitted. It it has been submitted. It's part of the plan. That was reviewed by the Planning Commission. It, and these are engineered plans, which you rely on the on the engineer to know how to move that water back and forth. As to the fact that there was water damage that occurred on Mr. Lee's property, the, I I don't believe that that is an issue that has to do with the subdivision regulations because it's, I think it's more a situation of the topography of the area. He is a down, he he is correct. He is a, for part of the subdivision, he's at a lower, he is a lower level or a lower elevation than than the subdivision. However, that's why you have the engineered drainage plan and erosion plan and grading plan, which has all been submitted. And the applicant is here. He can also address a proposal that was also discussed and what he's doing to help with the drainage at this site. So that's one issue, the drainage issue. The other issue that Mr. Lee alluded to was the, when, when the eligibilities were transferred to this area by Mr. Peterson several years, many years ago, there was some discussion about how this property was, how Mr. Peterson was going to develop this property. And subsequently, Mr. Peterson sold his land and the building eligibilities to Mr. Holbeck. And Mr. Holbeck has now proposed to develop it in this manner. It was not a requirement of that conditional use permit transfer of those eligibilities that a specific layout or design had to be followed. It it was just a requirement that a preliminary plan be submitted, meeting the requirements of this, of the subdivision regulations and reviewed and approved. They have done that and those are engineered plans. And you may wish to also ask Mr. Holbeck, the developer or the property owner, what steps he has also taken, so.
Mr. Holbeck, did you want to address the commission? Could you give your name and your address, please?
My name is Jim Holbeck. I currently live at two seven three three nine Ridgeway Road in Lincoln County, Harrisburg. I purchased this land, just closed on it here not too long ago, within the last couple of months. And when I bought the land, I bought it with six eligibilities, which were transferred years ago. I had nothing to do with any of those transfers. It followed all the rules of what you guys require that that eligibilities can be transferred for. So when I bought this in good faith, that the eligibilities were there and that I could develop this land, there was nothing else in writing that told me that I had to do anything different than that. There's two comments made today by Commissioner Barth that that I think are worthy of this conversation. One is that this is an ag county. If I don't buy this land, I don't put a house up on this land and alfalfa continues to be grown on this land. That caused apparently this water damage before I owned the land. I have nothing to do with the fact that it was changed from row crop to alfalfa. The other issue is that it is downhill. And you talked about another piece of land, that you talked about drainage concerns. I really don't have a lot of control in the fact that their house was built at the bottom of a draw of this land. Now, what I have offered to do to help in this situation at my expense, which could have been done by the landowner, Tony Lee, but I decided that I'm going to try to see what we can do to help him out. And I decided that I'm going to put a berm across the back of his property, of which that would direct the the water that comes down this draw currently into his yard and move it to the ditch of the road that we have engineered to put in. I think that addresses the drainage. I'm doing it at my expense. It's not necessary, as far as I'm concerned, to do, but it's doing it to try to help that situation. But I think a lot of what the concerns that were brought to you are past concerns. And I'm a little disappointed to hear that he's totally opposed to this development because I don't know what this development does any different than what's existed in the past.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Mr. Holbeck?
Questions, if you have any.
Any other comments? I have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary plans. There's no more comments. I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand sixteen agreement for middle school diversion officer and a disproportionate minority contact coordinator in the amount of sixty-five thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars between Minnehaha County and Lutheran Social Services of Sioux Falls, Jamie Gravitt. Except for Jamie's not here, so we have Erin.
No. Good morning. Erin Serska, Minnehaha County Commission Office. I'm here on behalf of Jamie. He had to go up to a commission meeting up north to talk to them about some different things. So for the, we're here today asking for permission to enter into contract with Lutheran Social Services to provide two services. One is a diversion program for kids who are diverted out of the justice system. And the other is to provide disproportionate minority contact coordination and staff work for our community. It's one of the JDAI eight-course strategies that we've been implementing over the last five years. The deliverables from the contract include completion and implementation of a work plan specific to racial and ethnic disparities in our community, to organize staff and facilitate monthly DMC workgroup meetings and monthly coalition meetings, to complete a grant that is awarded to our area every year to specifically address this, to plan and organize a yearly conference and to plan and organize trainings for our community regarding this issue. So if there's any other questions or anything, I'm asking for.
The DMC, or not the DMC, the, this position already existed. It's just an expansion of duties. Because of the way things have changed with JDAI, she's had less students in the diversion program and it's a good fit to put the coordinator position with that, correct?
Yeah, we are able, what we're able to do because of some of the the Senate bills and the changes in the law that have occurred, our numbers of youth through diversion programs have decreased over the last six to eight months. So what we're able to do is take, you know, leverage some of that funding that we've used and cap our caseload from eight to fifteen and reallocate some of the funding of a full-time FTE to to support the additional funds for this contract, which is only five thousand dollars.
Correct. We previously had a disproportionate minority contact full-time position in the juvenile detention and we have chosen to not fill that and to combine those two positions into one.
Right. And we also feel that having this position under a nonprofit in our community provides the perfect avenue to do more community organizing around of this topic and producing more programming and different participation within our community of the other groups that do some of the same work.
So this is the, this is a new contract with Lutheran Social Services. They have not been providing this service to Minnehaha.
Correct. It's taken that, yes, that is correct. It's, we'll be entering to a new one.
Okay. And does Lutheran Social Services, have they done this type of work elsewhere?
Yeah, they, Lutheran Social Services does this type where they have a holdup there. They do a lot of refugee and immigrant outreach facilitating programs. They're doing a big project here downtown. They have a Native American coordinator that does specific services for Native American youth. They've been participatory within the work group and this work since, for over the last six to seven years.
The DMC coordinator, or excuse me, the diversion officer position was with LSUs before, so we had that contract. This is just an addition or change of contract so that it would have two positions in it now instead of one.
Okay. That's what I was trying to clarify. No, that's okay.
Additional questions?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign attachment to the food service contract between Minnehaha County and the Juvenile Detention Center and the CBM management, managed services. Good morning.
Good morning.
Again.
Again.
Jamie is not here.
I'm Lynn Crowell, Assistant Director at the Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie couldn't be here today, so I'm representing JDC. We asked that, we have authorization for the chair to sign this agreement to have a contract continue with CBM. They've been providing our food service and it comes due July first. We were informed by the state we weren't required to do an RFP this year. One thing, CBM has had a new manager come on board in January of this year. And what we've noticed since that change is we've had some real improved communication between JDC and CBM as far as if we had any concerns. They were addressed right away. They've been open to our requests. Um, they've been open to our requests, willing to listen. And so, we felt comfortable not completing the RFP this year. Um, we will do the RFP next year. Um, one thing to note, the cost of the meals did increase slightly. They went from two dollars and fifteen cents to two dollars and twenty cents each. The snacks also increased a small amount, eighty-one cents, up to eighty-three cents. And, um, this will be covered, it, well, first of all, it's in our budget, but also the match, um, for the reimbursement rate will cover those increases. So, um, also Kirsten Katmeyer with the State's Attorney's Office has looked over the contract and, um, it meets all the guidelines for the school lunch program. Often, we have received enough food where the kids can even have seconds on, uh, some of the menu items. And, um, so we just ask that this contract be approved.
Okay, questions for Lynn, Commissioner Kelly?
I think we've probably asked this question before, but why does not this contract run concurrent with the jail contract?
That I don't know. Why is it not current with the jail contract?
It's not, uh, the jail comes up the end of the year, I believe, is that right?
My understanding, um, Commissioner Kelly, is that it's part of the federal school lunch program guidelines and that runs July first through June thirtieth.
Good.
We are getting federal money, pardon me.
Yes, we are.
For meals.
We get a reimbursement, school, school lunch reimbursement. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen is authorize the chairman to sign an interlocal agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County pursuant to the disparate allocations determinations for the U.S. Department of Justice Bryant, Justice Assistance Grant. Kirsten, now you can talk.
All right. Um, today I bring to you, um, um, the, the memorandum of understanding, the interlocal agreement for our two thousand sixteen burn jag. Um, it's been determined by the Attorney General's Office that the disparate allocation, um, would be thirty-five percent to the county and sixty-five percent of the funds would go to the city. And so, we request that you, um, approve this agreement and, um, provide it with a signature and then we would provide this, um, to the city to have the mayor sign.
Any questions, Kirsten?
Jean, can you explain how the, the, uh, amounts are divvied up? I mean, how do you decide who, how much the county gets and how much the city gets?
Um, I will do my best, um. I believe that we got those numbers from the Attorney General's Office. It has to do with, um, in the very little that I've researched it, it's, um, because based on the, the crime rates is how they, how they allocate these funds. And if it, and if the major city within a county is receiving a, and I don't remember what the percentages are, so I can look that up and get that for you, but I don't remember, but it's, it disparate. It's, it's very, very much higher that the city would have received than we would have if they would have awarded the grant separately. But because the crime in the city affects the county, um, they want, they put it, the money together and then they, um, di- divide it this way. And I believe we get these percentages from the Attorney General's Office, but I should check on that to make sure that that's correct, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But they are percentages that were, or maybe, um, Commissioner, did you, do you know?
He has a comment, he has a comment.
Digging into my memory bank, uh, there used to be a citizens committee, uh, that was made up of outside, Sheriff's Office and, and others. And this grant used to be significantly more, in the hundreds of thousands if I remember correctly. And then, then that committee would do, go through this process. Now, what, that hasn't happened for at least eight years and I know of maybe more. And, uh, so now the amounts are not that great that, that, uh, the city and the county have worked together on this thing. I don't, I'm not aware of the Attorney General's opinion, but I think that balance was about the same all along. I can't remember for sure, it's been quite a while.
Okay, I could be very incorrect on that, so please don't repeat that. I'm sorry about that. Um, I can look into this more and get more information, just to have that background, it would be good to have.
Additional questions?
Do we want to approve this today then, or shall we?
Oh, yeah, I, I think so, this is really kind of.
Just be interesting to, interesting for it to know.
I'll report that back.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve.
You have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Architectural Roofing and Sheet Melding Incorporated in the amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars for the roof replacement on the county administration building.
Good morning, Commissioner Mark Krins, Facilities Department. At the May thirty-first commission meeting, the commission approved accepting the low bid from Architectural Roofing and Sheet Mel to replace the roof on the administration building. We've received the contracts and are requesting commission approval for the chair to sign so we can move forward with this project. Are there any questions for me?
Questions for Mark?
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign that agreement.
Commissioner Bender has a question.
Mark, I just wanted to clarify that the state's attorneys have had a chance to review this contract?
Yes.
I would like to.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign fiscal year two thousand seventeen contract for clinically managed residential detoxification services in the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Social Services Division of Behavioral Health. Robert Wilson, good morning, Robert.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. Um, as you know, there's been a longstanding, uh, arrangement where the, uh, county does receive state funds to, um, provide clinically managed residential detoxification services. Um, the current, the, these funds are allocated on a, um, calendar that, that lines up with the state's fiscal year and the current, um, contract, uh, for providing these funds expired on May thirty-first, uh, of this year. Uh, Department of Social Services Division of Be- Behavioral Health has set aside a total of sixty-three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars in state funds for FY twenty seventeen detox expenditures at the Minnehaha County Detox Center. Um, the contract for last year that just expired was, um, originally in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand seven oh three. That was amended down significantly before the end of the fiscal year and ended at sixty thou- sixty thousand seven oh three, which is much more in line with what the actual expenses are that are, uh, are, are paid from these funds. Um, have, we've attached a copy of the co- the contract for your review. Um, and this contract began on June one of sixteen and will run through May thirty-one of, of next year. And I, uh, just in, in chatting, uh, with, uh, staff this morning before this issue, I, I believe even at that current sixty-three five eleven number that we have a, a, a number lower than that budgeted in, uh, for next year for u- for use of these funds. So, it, uh, this is, um, uh, a, a number that we, uh, is understood to be, um, what, more than sufficient to what will be, uh, be required from these, these funds.
Questions, Commissioner Barth?
Robert, uh, so are we talking about money to support the sobering center? Is this the, the money that we're talking about, or, uh, because it seems to me like we've not actually solved the issue of people drinking too much and stuff. And so, reducing the amount of money we spend on detoxification seems, uh, preliminary or premature.
You know, if, if we're, I know Kerry Benz with, uh, Human Services is here and, and I don't, uh, know that I, that I can go too deep into the weeds for you as far as, uh, if this stream is going towards the, the traditional detoxification program that you still have, which, which serves fewer people but still exist, or the sobering center, which is, um, is now, i- is, is also an important component of this. It's, um, the chain, the difference in funding, um, that where, where we saw the decrease that had a, a lot to do, uh, with the, uh, bringing the sobering center online. Uh, but it is, um, it, it's all part of the, the services that, that we do provide and, uh, and, um, base, allocated based on, uh, use previ- on previous years and, and expectations and forecasts of what, what will be required.
Commissioner Kelly?
Uh, the sobering center, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, sobering center is the jail, is the sheriff's deal. And, uh, he, I think they cooperatively work with, with, uh, whoever the people that run the detox are. But, uh, basically, it's a sheriff's deal located right next door, obviously, to detox. And I think these state funds go purely to detox.
Yes, these, this is detox and this is treatment. This is not just taking care of somebody who's intoxicated and, and sobering them up or making sure they're safe for a few hours and heading out. This is about treatment, which is what detox is, is a residential treatment facility.
And it's made significant differences in population.
Yes, well, our numbers are much lower because the revolving door people, you no longer see coming in. And, and, um, this really corrected the numbers that we had coming in and also corrected what we were billing off for.
And that's because, if I may, because the people going to the soberies, sobering center, we just hold them until they're able to be released.
There's no TV, there's no coffee, there's no amenities at all from what I remember and, uh,
It's, it's, uh, it's even worse than being on the county commission.
Diswayed guys that were looking for a cheap hotel.
I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen is liaison reports, are there any liaison reports?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I was at, uh, the East Dakota Water District meeting last week and, uh, apparently they've made some significant steps in cleaning up Skunk Creek. And, uh, they have a fellow working for them that has a drone who has flown over Skunk Creek before and after and can, uh, can show that, uh, the improvement. And I'm going to work to see if he can come and, uh, entertain us with some of that progress. And I think it does show the value of having something like a drone, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, to look at, uh, planning and zoning drainage issue or to search for someone, uh, in a rescue or recovery effort in a cornfield or a river.
Have they ever looked at ditch road and that mess?
I don't know.
Um, that may be worth bringing up. They've got, they've, they've got a levy, they've got money and, uh, that road, you know, that's caused some of the problems to the, to the county properties to the, to the east, so.
I'll, I'll ask.
Additional reports?
I have one, um, I have signed up to watch, um, an opioid webinars. The National Association of County Commissioners and the National Association of Cities has a, um, task force, national task force this year and they are looking into the epidemic of opioid abuse. Um, and I was able to listen to my first one this last week. Um, and so, I just wanted to report on some of the stuff that they talked about. There was a big article yesterday in the Argus Leader about, um, opioid and problems here already in South Dakota. I think right now we're kind of an isolated bubble, it's not as bad as it is in some parts of the United States. And that's why this task force has come together because it's really exploding in other places and i- it's very likely it could be coming to us next. Um, the sheriff reported in that article that they do, or they are getting, or they have, they've ordered Narcan, which is the antidote for, um, an opioid overdose. But it was interesting to listen to some of the other things that are going on in other states and how they're trying to address this and, and to try to come up with a national plan. Um, one of the programs that's being used is called MAT, it's Medication Assisted Treatment. Um, there's been a lot of science behind this program and it's trying to get people off opioids with medication assistance. Um, obviously, it takes a lot of training and policy changes to, um, come to those levels. Um, I wanted to just kind of talk about one specific, they had a jailer from, um, Kenton County, Kentucky, who has, um, tried to tackle the substance abuse in his jail. He said that in their jail, the population, about eighty percent of those had substance abuse. And so, they went into their jail and they asked those people, how many of them would be willing to go into treatment while in jail? And they had a fifty percent response of people that wanted to go into re-treatment. So, they dedicated a hundred of their jail beds towards a treatment program of these people. That program is a full-time program, they use evidence-based cognitive behavioral therapy. It also has medically assisted treatment, so that M A X that I just, or M A T that I just mentioned. Um, and then they have, um, referrals and links to community-based services. And then some of his outcomes were just remarkable, they've had a hundred and ninety-seven complete this program so far with only seventeen reoffending. They said they've seen a ninety, ninety-one percent success rate and a ninety-four percent success rate by using the M A T, which is the medical assisted treatment. He said, after they get into the treatment, the medical treatment, he said it tr- starts to return the brain to a more normal state and the social problems start to reverse themselves. Um, they are on a medication, but it's not opioids. They have to be medically followed, um, even after the release from jail or whatever, whoever's doing this program has to be medically pro- followed and also psychologically followed until they can get themselves back on track. But they said people can actually function back in society and get them off the opioids and they're not a social problem anymore because they function at a normal level. Granted, I don't know a whole lot about it because I just was listening to the seminar. Um, um, they said that they would have to be reevaluated in the beginning, almost daily, then weekly, then monthly, and then they can stretch out farther depending on how well they're going. Um, anyway, it's very interesting, there's another webinar coming up, I believe it's next week, Thursday. Um, you can sign up still to get on them, I could get you the information about that. Um, we are meeting also at the National Association Convention, um, in July and I've been invited to go to a, um, luncheon and, um, speaker on, also continued work on what they're doing with this. Um, I think it's definitely something that we need to be keeping our eyes on and I'm looking at these webinars, you can go back and listen to the old ones, they're at the NACO, N A C O dot org slash webinars if you want to listen to them. The one I listened to yesterday was about an hour and, or this last week, was about an hour and a half. And the first one I missed because I was working and then they've got another one next week. And then the one in just, in July, and then I'm not sure where we go from there. But, very interesting information, um, and I think the sheriff's already starting to be on top of some of this stuff by getting the Narcan on board for, before we get there, so, very disturbing problem.
Commissioner Hightower, could you just clarify what op- what drugs, common drugs are opioids that people would understand?
I don't know if I can.
Isn't it heroin?
Y- y- yeah, heroin is what people are, you, opioids are the ones that are prescribed as painkillers by your doctor. And in the article, it said, South Dakota has really kind of gone overkill with their, with their, um, opioids and, or, or with their painkillers and consequently, people who can't afford them or can't steal them or whatever are now switching to heroin. We haven't got a huge problem with heroin in South Dakota yet. But that's what comes, is because heroin is cheap and getting these prescription medications is getting harder because the nation is figuring out this is a problem. And so, they've been starting to cut back on the amount of pain medications that people are getting and it's the specific types of medications, I can't give you the names, I should be able to, but I can't give you the names of the specific ones. I think OxyContin might be one, um, that type of, that level of pain medication. And some people, you know, use those things for chronic pain or short ter- short-term pain, like if they've just gone in and had a hip replacement or something, they might use them. You need to be looking for other ways to address those levels of pain. Um, and so, it's just, it's just kind of a, it's really exploding nationwide and we really haven't seen it here yet. Obviously, we don't want to see it here, but we need to be prepared for it when it's coming, so.
Commissioner Barth?
I really appreciate you, um, bringing this up because I do think it is here now. It's just not as bad as, say, West Virginia or whatever, but I think I saw where twenty-nine thousand people died last year from, uh, opioid abuse and, uh, related issues. You look at Prince who died recently and, uh, they were saying that, you know, if you're mixing these things, if you're, say, taking it, your legal prescription and then, uh, take, uh, NyQuil or something to, uh, because you've got a runny nose, suddenly you're dead. And, uh, I think that the program you talked about is interesting because, uh, you know, it may be more labor-intensive, but it may not require as much brick and mortar. And, uh, we need to sometimes take that extra care of person-to-person care as opposed to just, uh, you know, I've said before that people need sometimes institutionalization, not incarceration. Uh, you know, things like the Glory House and, uh, stuff like that help people. It's intensive, it takes a long time, but, uh, it might be better than, uh, just leaving you in your cell.
You know, this is an advantage of, of what NACO does for us because they're bringing experts from across the nation together and they're, like I said, they're working with the National Association of Cities to try to tackle this program and they can pull people from all over to get the best answers for us. And so, very good women are.
We don't have a lot of treatment facilities in South Dakota either, do we?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think the Glory House works. We don't have a place to.
Yeah, this one, this one here was, started in the jail.
Yeah.
Because these people were already incarcerated, so, yeah, very interesting. Um, with that, if there's no more liaison reports, I will go on to new business, is there any new business? Is there any old business? Okay, then I would look for, um, Okay, then I would look for um a a motion to adjourn until um executive session for litigation and contract negotiation.
That's my motion.
Second. The motion is second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned, and we will be having a um scheduled county commission budget meeting immediately following the executive session.